Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'll call into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees on August 20th, beginning at 7:17 PM. I want to thank everyone for coming out and joining us this evening. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Since it's back-to-school time, Dr. Cavassos, will you lead us with the pledge?
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you would please take a moment to silence your cellphones, electronic devices, to avoid disruptions and buzzes and things like that during the meeting, we would greatly appreciate that. And join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. First up on our agenda this evening is administrative appointments. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Solins, and I'd like to recommend that the board ratify the individuals discussed in closed session for Assistant Principal for Blanton Elementary, Assistant Principal for Dunn Elementary, and Assistant Principal for Jones Academy, and Assistant Principal for Wimbishe Elementary.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Do we have a motion to approve the administrative appointments as discussed in executive session?
So move. Second.
There we go. We have a motion by Mr. Hibbs and a second by Dr. Raish. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All trustees voting in affirmative, welcome. And Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Solins, and it's my pleasure to present the new Assistant Principal for Blanton Elementary, Ms. Chelsea Broughton.[143.72][143.72](applause). Chelsea attended the University of Louisiana to obtain her Bachelor of Arts in Social Work, University of Louisiana to obtain her elementary education, Master of Education, most recently a third-grade teacher in Mansfield ISD, and has taught second grade in Fort Worth as well, and has taught first grade. Chelsea, welcome. Anything you'd like to say?
Thank you. I would like to thank President Solins, all of the board members, and also Dr. Cavassos for this awesome opportunity to serve in Arlington Independent School District. I also like to thank Dr. Brown and Mr. Leonard for allowing me to partner with them to serve the students at Blanton Elementary. Thank you very much.[192.31][192.31](applause).
Next, I'd like to introduce the Assistant Principal for Dunn Elementary, Ms. Calivian Green, and she is unable to attend tonight due to a school activity. She's already working. So, Calivian Green, we'll bring her to another board meeting.[213.12][213.12](applause). And I'd like to introduce the Assistant Principal for Jones Academy, Lizbeth Gonzalez, who also has school activities, so she's not here. We'll bring her back at another board meeting.[225.15][225.15](laughter). And then, I'd like to introduce the new Assistant Principal for Wimbishe Elementary, Mr. Michael Mason, and he is here.[237.43][237.43](applause). Michael attended the University of Texas at Arlington to receive his Bachelor of Arts in Interdisciplinary Studies, UT Arlington for his Master of Education in Ed Leadership, most recently a first-grade teacher at West Elementary, and has also taught at West Second Grade ESL. Michael, congratulations.
Thank you. Dr. Cavassos, members of the board and the AISD community, it's truly an honor to be in your presence tonight. This has been an incredible journey for me and for my family, and I look forward to see where it's going to take us. I've been blessed to have amazing support system in my career, knowledgeable mentors like Terry Glover, who's here tonight, Waileen George, Dr. Matt Barnell, Malcolm Turner, and Stacy Lambott. They taught me so much that has really prepared me for this job. My friends and colleagues who have seen me through my best and have helped me through my worst, they were great company along the way. To my family, to my children, I am your biggest fan, and they just make me want to be a better person. To my new family at Wimbishe, thank you for embracing me and making me feel so welcome. Your talents are unmeasurable, and your dedication to children is unyielding, because you are truly the superheroes.[313.33][313.33](laughter). And together, this is going to be amazing. Thank you.[318.41][318.41](applause).
Next, I'd like to make some introductions. These individuals aren't, they don't come before the board, but I think it's important to introduce our senior director. So, this time, I'd like to introduce our Senior Director for Transformational Learning, Dr. Tamela Horton.[337.72][337.72](applause). Tamela attended the University of Texas at Tyler and received her Bachelor of Science in Mathematics, UT Tyler for her Master of Education in Ed Administration, and UT Arlington for her PhD in K-16 Educational Leadership. Most recently, Dr. Horton worked as an Executive Director in Lancaster ISD, has been over special programs, school improvement, has also been a principal in Lancaster. Also worked as a principal in Dallas ISD, and Assistant Principal in Duncanville ISD, has been a math teacher in Longview, and in Tatum ISD. Tamela, congratulations. Tamela's already been working, but she's being introduced tonight, so.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, President Solins, and Dr. Cavassos, and members of the board. I want to thank you for this opportunity. I have been here several months, and it has been a pleasure to see the many great things that are occurring in Arlington ISD. I'm just really excited to serve here and to be a part of growing students who are going to graduate, lifelong learners, who are going to graduate, prepare to excel in their college or career of choice. I've brought a few family members with me that I want to introduce. My mother and father, Joe and Patsy Sneed. My heart, my daughter, Brianna Wharton. My sister, Joetta Wesley. They have always encouraged me and supported me to serve with purpose and to do my very best. I love you. Thank you. Thank you again for this opportunity.[428.44][428.44](applause).
Last but not least, I'd like to introduce our Director of Transportation, Mr. Timothy Tim brought his own following.[445.78][445.78](laughter). Tim attended.
He was able to get him here with transportation.
That's right.[452.81][452.81](laughter). That's right.
No charge to the district.[456.13][456.13](laughter).
Attended University of Memphis to receive its Bachelor of Science in Education, Texas A&amp;M Commerce for his Master of Education in Ed Administration, most recently our interim Director for Transportation, has worked as a manager for Transportation, has also served as an Assistant Principal at Wood, at Gunn, at Martin, and at Shackelford, and has taught in Dallas ISD and Memphis City School District. So, Tim, congratulations.
Thank you, sir. First of all, I'd like to thank God for this opportunity and privilege to serve, and I consider this an honor, one that I do not take lightly. And I would like to thank President Solins, and to you, Dr. Cavassos, and the school board members for your confidence, vote of confidence in me and doing this position. And I also would like to thank my boss, Mr. Hill, for the recommendation for me to serve in this position. I like to consider this the early-bird version of education. As our banner says, "Education begins with transportation." So, I'm excited about these mobile teachers and labs that we're going to have traveling throughout the streets, and I'm just thankful to serve with them, these highly-trained professionals, and an awesome office staff, whom which one is here tonight, Mr. Richard Long Greer, our fleet manager, he's here tonight in support, and we're thankful that he's here.[540.16][540.16](applause). But I have a few more guests I would just like to recognize. I see some fellow educators and administrators I've worked with throughout the years, but I do want to acknowledge, let me go ahead and do this, and I'll say the best for last. The first principal that I ever worked for here in the state of Texas, some 20-plus years ago, and the last administrator I worked with is here tonight, too, but I want to, I affectionately call her Mama Mitchell, Verna Mitchell, she's retired administrator, some 40-plus years that she worked in Dallas. I worked at Maynard Jackson Vanguard School.[575.82][575.82](laughter). And I call her my gateway to Texas, so she allowed me this opportunity. So, this is a very special privilege to have her here tonight. Not only she's here, but the last principal I worked for in the building, Sandy White at Wood Elementary is here also in support, thankful to have her. Next to her is my lovely wife, Kim, she's here tonight with me, and also my brother has driven in from Memphis, Tennessee, home of Elvis. He's here, and I'm thankful to have him with me. Took out his busy schedule to be here. And also, another person very special in my life, my father in the ministry, my mentor and pastor, Pastor Kerry, Dr. Kerry D. Wesley, Antioch Fellowship, so I'm thankful to have all of them here tonight. Again, thank you all.[617.16][617.16](applause).
Thank you all so much, and thank you for your patience with us early this evening so that the board had a little extended work to do, so thank you for your patience. So, as is our custom, we ask that the appointees follow Mr. Cale to the lobby for receiving line so that each of us can meet you and welcome you. If you would, if the audience would please let the board go first, we would appreciate that, and we will take a 10-minute break and come back at 7:37. Thank you, and welcome back. I'll call this meeting back into order at 7:39. And next on our agenda is Action Item A, Considered Ordinance Number 135, Setting the 2015 Tax Rate. Ms. Powell?
Good evening, President Solins, board members, Dr. Cavassos. We are waiting for the PowerPoint.[756.57][756.57](laughter).
Ms. Solins, they didn't expect us to be back on time, so.
Can you pantomime the texture?[770.51][770.51](laughter).
We're here.[772.51][772.51](laughter). All right. Good evening. This evening, the board will consider adopting the tax rate for the 2015-2016 school year. You'll recall that on June 25th, this board approved the budget for the 2015-2016 school year, fiscal year. That same evening, we had a public hearing on the proposed tax rate and the budget. We've now received our certified property values, our 2015 certified property values, so we can adopt the tax rate to support that budget. When we prepared the preliminary and the proposed budgets that we presented to the board in June, we used preliminary property values provided to us by the Tarrant Appraisal District to estimate the certified values and the revenue that would be generated by those values. But now the Inted has released its certified values, and so we'll share those with you this evening. Our certified values for 2015 total $22,335,539,355. These values are up 2.6% over last year's values, and they are slightly lower than the values that we estimated when we prepared our budget in June. I'll show you that in just a minute. New construction actually makes up about 25% of the growth in values this year. This chart shows just a trend of our property values over the last 10 years. So, you can see that we've had slight increases over the last several years. As I mentioned just a moment ago, our property values are up 2.6% over last year's certified value. They are a little bit less than what we projected when we estimated values and put the budget together in June. We had projected that values would be up about 3.9% based on some historical trend information that we were using. Again, our fiscal year starts July 1, and so we have to adopt our budget before that date. The board adopted the budget June 25th, and we do not adopt the property tax rate until we have certified values. You'll remember, that's a change. Back in the day when we had fiscal year that began September 1, we would have the certified values in time to adopt a tax rate before we actually got to our fiscal year. Usually, we did it the same night that we adopted the budget. So, based on the certified property values dated July 25th, we are proposing a tax rate of 1.412952, so a little over $1.41 per $100 evaluation. And that's about a 6.5 cent increase over last year's tax rate, and that increase is entirely on the debt service side to service debt bonds issued and approved by our voters as part of the 2014 bond election. The rate that we are proposing, though, is just a bit less than what we had estimated in June. It's about .2 cents less than the rate that we brought to the board in June. Again, that's strictly on the debt service side of the tax rate. We had projected that we would need a tax of 37.5 cents for debt service. We actually are bringing a value or a tax rate slightly less than that because the bonds that we've sold this summer, we wound up with a lower interest rate on those bonds than we had projected, and so that's allowed us to adopt a lower tax rate. So, using the values dated July 25th, as I mentioned, the certified values are a little bit less than what we had projected when we put the budget together in June. If we were to stop right here and nothing else were to happen over the course of the year, our budget, not actuals, but our budget would have $2.6 million less revenue in it than we adopted. What we know is that the values change as the year goes on. We do know that there is some work that the appraisal district is continuing to do, and there are some accounts that will be added into our tax roll this fall. So, we expect that the actual cert, or the actual values on which taxes are collected will be a little bit higher than what we are seeing tonight, and so I think that the impact will be something less than this $2.6 million lesser budget number. We also know that over the course of the year, we have changes in all parts of our budgets, and so we think that we are very comfortable with the budget as it stands right now, and as you'll see in a few minutes, I don't recommend any amendment to the budget at this point. On the debt service side, I've already mentioned this, that we're actually bringing a proposed tax rate that is slightly less than the rate that we brought and proposed to the board in June, and again, that's because of the interest rates on our bonds. They were a little bit less than what we had projected in June. Something that's important to point out and a positive thing for homeowners is that the legislature approved an increase in the homestead exemption when they met the spring. And it's kind of a quirky deal as far as how it works out. They actually, this has to be approved by voters through a constitutional amendment election. That election will be held November 3, and that's actually about a month after all of the tax assessors in the state send out tax bills. Tax bills go out October 1. So, the state has directed tax assessors across the state to issue tax bills assuming that voters will approve the higher homestead exemption. And there is actually going to be language printed on the tax bills that points out the higher homestead exemption that the legislature approved, and it will state in there very, very specifically, that should that tax or that constitutional amendment election not pass, that the tax assessors will be issuing a supplemental bill for the additional tax. So, the presumption is that this will pass, and homeowners will recognize a benefit. The higher homestead exemption, that $10,000 of additional homestead exemption using our proposed tax rate will save a taxpayer $141 on their tax bills this next year. Every homeowner, regardless of the value of your house, receives one homestead exemption. And I'm going to show you a chart in just a minute to show the kind of the graduated effect of that, but everybody will save $141 on their tax bill, on Arlington ISD's tax bill, because of that higher homestead exemption. So, we always talk about our, the impact of our tax rate in terms of a $100,000 home. So, this year's, between the combination of us increasing our tax rate 6.5 cents on the debt service side to pay for bonds approved by voters, and that higher homestead exemption, the owner of a $100,000 house will actually save a little over $86 this year on their property taxes, their Arlington ISD taxes. So, I put together a little chart that shows the impact at different values of different valued homes, and again, regardless whether you have a $100,000 home or a $3 million home, we all get the same homestead exemption. And so, as that value grows, you'll see that the bottom line will look a little different, but up to the point of a little under $200,000, or I'm sorry, a little bit under $250,000, homeowners will experience a savings on their tax bill, their AISD taxes this year. So, the next steps this evening, again, we're presenting a proposed budget, or a proposed tax rate, rather, of 1.412952 per $100 of valuation. We recommend that the board adopt this rate, and then we will monitor property values and collections and other elements of our budget throughout the year and determine at the point we do a mid-year budget amendment if we need to make any adjustment for this. One thing I would go back and talk about on the homestead exemption is with the higher homestead exemption, the state will make school districts whole for that. So, you know, we will actually recognize less tax revenue because of that higher homestead exemption, but then the state aid will increase to replace that. And so, at the time that we adopted our budget, we did not have any of the data from the comptroller's office or from anyone else to help us make the calculation of what that impact would be. We did not have our certified values yet. We did not have last year's values recalibrated. So, as part of our budget amendment that we bring with the mid-year budget amendment, we will reduce taxes and increase state aid by equal amounts to show that shift. And that's what, that was the guidance that all the school districts with a July 1 start date were giving us. Go ahead and prepare your budget like you always have. Once the template is available from TEA for how to calculate state aid, once the comptroller recalibrates last year's values that have to go into the formula, then we'll know what that offset is between taxes and state aid, and we can just make that even swap between them with a budget amendment. So, if you all approve, there is a particular motion that has to be entered for our particular tax rate, and we would recommend that you adopt the 2015 tax rate as proposed.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Are there trustees with questions? Dr. Raish?
Thank you, President Solins. Oh, I voted, sorry. I hit the wrong button.[1430.15][1430.15](laughter).
Okay. We'll clear it. Was that the mic?
Thank you for the information. It's encouraging to hear that we're still able to offer a decrease from a few months ago on what we're about to vote on. With nearly 1 and 1/4 points difference, and I'm sure that took you by surprise, was what caused that? Well, I guess before I ask that, is that in line with other municipalities, other school districts in, say, the Tarrant County area?
It is. A number of districts and municipalities have commented that their values were a little less than what they had anticipated. We all do the same thing. We look at historical trends.
Right.
When we get our preliminary property values, we have a long history as to how those change between when we get them in May and when they're certified in July. And so, this was a bit of a change from what we had been seeing. And there are some additional accounts that Tarrant Appraisal District has indicated to us, they're not finished working yet, that will be taxed in this year, and they will be ultimately on our roll. That will help that. I don't think it will completely eliminate that difference. There's also a change in the law that if, that took effect this year, this is the first time that this becomes effective. If someone appealed their values last year and their values were lowered, then the appraisal district has to carry that property value at that same level the following year, and we've been told that that has had a bit of effect on our values. I don't know to the extent, to what extent, but the chief appraiser has shared that with us. So, it was, it's a change in the trend. I think a number of us have expressed that we were surprised that the values were a little bit less than what we had projected, but it is still trending up in a positive direction.
Right, right. Still trending up, but not as much, and with our, what seems to be from our realtors of, you know, in that marketplace, inventory's low.
Right.
Demand's high, and everything pointed towards what everybody was looking at, that the valuation would be higher.
Another thing about property values that are certified by the appraisal district is that there is somewhat of a lag between what you actually see happening in the market and when it is reported to the appraisal district and becomes part of your certified values. And a good example of that was when the economy dropped dramatically in 2009, it wasn't until the following, 2010, where if you look at our property values, they dropped dramatically and everybody's did. So, there tends to be about a one-year lag in what, between what you see actually in the marketplace and when it impacts your certified values.
Yeah. Well, thank you for the information. I would have liked to have had that candid moment for you, Mr. Drollinger, and everybody else when you got that news, and the look on your face, like, oh, my gosh.
Well, no, you wouldn't.[1624.51][1624.51](laughter).
Right. Thank you.
Ms. Mose?
Thank you. The increase in state aid to make up for the decrease in the tax revenue, when will we see that within our budget cycle? When will we receive that money?
Well, we are paid on a schedule from the state, and so the cash actually comes to us on a very scheduled basis. We have just received word, even, I think, in the last week, that we, TEA has now published a template that has that, the impact of that factored in. The comptroller's office, this is a real big part of the whole puzzle here, the comptroller's office had to go back and recalibrate all the 2014 values as if that higher homestead exemption had been in place then, because it's our prior-year values that go into the state aid template for the calculation. So, we've just, in the last week, also seen that certified information from the comptroller's office. So, we've just now gotten the information to run those numbers, and we will be doing that this fall, especially as we get updated enrollment data and can update our attendance information, but, you know, we actually receive those payments throughout the year on a schedule.
And is, but you still have to fill out the template for the new change?
We will do that internally, yes. Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Solins. Ms. Powell, with 141's a rate, what did we think our max was going to go up to when we passed this?
Right. So, remember, there are two parts of the tax rate.
Right.
$1.4 is M and O, and so on the INS side, the tax rate that we're proposing is basically 37.3 cents. We thought that the maximum that we would get to with this current bond package would be 40 cents, and that was from this year out through 2020. So, there's five years in there where we expected that we would top out at about 40 cents, and so.
And you're saying 40 cents of the INS side.
Yes, on the INS.
So, instead, 37, so in essence.
So, we're about.
2.8 cents left.
Right. We're about 2.8 cents less than where we thought we would be for this particular tax rate because property values grew last year, and they've grown again this year, and we've gotten better interest rates on the bonds that we've sold.
All right. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
I don't see any further lights. Do we have a motion, please?
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 1.412952. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 1.412952, which is effectively .54% increase in the tax rate.
Thank you. We have a motion by Ms. Hudson, a second.
I'll second.
And a second by Ms. Walton. No further discussion. Please vote. All trustees voting in. Thank you.
And next, we move to action item B. Consider approval of a resolution authorizing the purchase of 10,676 square feet of a tract of land located in the McClure survey.
Is she ready for a motion?
Yes, she's ready for a motion.
President Solins, I move the approval of a resolution authorizing the purchase of 10,676 square feet of attractive land located in the GH McClure survey, abstract number 1058, Tarrant County, Texas, being a portion of lot 1R CH, CH McClure addition, in addition to the city of Arlington, Tarrant County, Texas, according to the plat recorded in Cabinet A, Slide 8311, plat records, Tarrant County, Texas, PRTCT, I guess I could have said that, locally known as 1924 Baird Farm Road, Arlington, Texas 76006, approval of an earnest money contract for a purchase of said property and appropriation of $90,319 of surplus fund balance of the local construction fund for the purchase.
I'll second. And Dr. Rush, was that plat 8311?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I had that off the top of my head.
I'll second. Thank you.
Thank you, team. We have a motion by Dr. Rush and a second by Mr. Hogg. I don't see any other buttons for discussion, so please vote. All trustees voting affirmative, the motion carries. Thank you very much. And next, we'll move on to the agenda, to the consent agenda. Do we have any items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda? Thank you. Not seeing any items withdrawn, so tonight, we'll be considering the items listed on the agenda under consent items. Donation and bid information was presented earlier this evening, and thank you, Ms. Powell, for providing this report. We most certainly want to thank the community for their generosity. Ms. Powell?
Yes, this evening, we are bringing one bid for consideration, and we're recommending the lowest bid, the bid that represents the best value for the district. And on donations, there were no donations on this particular agenda this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Hogg and a second by Mr. Hibbs. Any discussion? All trustees voting affirmative, the motion carries. Thank you very much. We do not have discussion items on our agenda this evening, and I want to confirm with Ms. Benjamin, do we have any open forum for non-agenda items cards this evening? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move forward then to superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Solins, and like to report some information that you'll see up there on the screen. We had a successful State of the District luncheon, August 10th. I really appreciate the Arlington Chamber of Commerce and all our partners and our business partners that came together to the State of the District luncheon. Were able to announce some of the things that we're doing and refresh everyone's memory of the great things happening in AISD. Next, we're excited to welcome our first STEM Academy class and our second collegiate high school class, and you see them pictured there. The STEM Academy attended a camp last week, and the students were able to meet their peers and meet their teachers. They're coming from all over the district. It was a very, very positive event at Martin High School, and we've done some very positive news coverage as well with the Star Telegram. Appreciate their support on that as well. Hopefully, you had a chance to attend the first-ever back-to-school fair at the Dallas Cowboys Stadium or AT&amp;T Stadium. It was well-attended. It was a huge success, and it was a success because of the community that has come together to support this effort. Over 8,000 students received backpacks and supplies, very appreciative of all our organizations, the NAACP, Junior League of Arlington, Churches of Arlington, the Jerry Jones Foundation, the YET, and then the Family Youth Education Foundation as well. And all our volunteers, you noticed if you were there that all the people were in the green t-shirts. They stood out a little bit, but you saw them everywhere. And I want to thank Erin Perales and Leslie Johnson and everyone else, too many to thank, but they took the lead, and it was a very, very successful event, and we hope to do it again next year, right, Leslie? Yeah, okay, good. And so, so this was, this was a great event. Finally, instead of convocation this year, as you know, we decided to focus on our teachers. And we had a day of service for our teachers in lieu of convocation, and we had all our employees that could volunteer at the school level to help teachers get ready for the beginning of school year and welcome our students. It was very successful. Our teachers were very appreciative. We had to un-staple that because I was crooked, and that's what she was doing, was correcting the border on the bulletin board. But we finished, and so it looks fantastic, and I hope you all enjoyed the day of service as well. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Are there board members with school board reports this evening? Ms. Walton?
Thank you, Ms. Solins. Oh, I just wanted to reiterate how wonderful the back-to-school kickoff was. The atmosphere at AT&amp;T Stadium was just electric, and everyone behaved so beautifully. We only lost a couple of children, but they were all found. And I wanted to say again to Dr. Cavassos, what a beautiful job you did at the State of the District address. That was, knocked it out of the park. It was, it was well said, and everyone's, I'm still getting comments from people about that. We had the new teacher breakfast. I was privileged to attend that on the 14th. It was sponsored by our AISD Ed Foundation, Education Foundation. And I stayed and listened to the speaker, Raoul Magdaleno, who, pretty ADHD, but wonderfully entertaining speaker. And my favorite thing he said was, "Teachers are the most powerful people in the world." And I want, the new teachers all heard that, but I want all of our employees, teachers, teacher aides, everybody to hear that. You all are the most powerful people in the whole world as we start our school. And then, the day of work today was fun. I went out to Crowe, where I had taught a long time ago, and helped a new hire kindergarten teacher out there, and was warmly welcomed by Principal McDougall and the staff out there. So, we've had a, we've had a good 10 days here, and thank everybody that's had anything to do with all of it.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Dr. Rush?
Thank you, President Solins. Yeah, the events were wonderful that we've attended. The back-to-school kickoff, we were able to touch so many more lives, and it all, all results from work of people, just like we do as a board, checking, checking the egos at the door, checking the who wants their name on it, their label on it. Great programs that we've had in the past, and everybody came together in force to affect so many more lives. And there were, there was one little boy, I just wanted to share this story, and there were several stories like this, where he, he said, "I'm so excited to go back to school. I'm so excited." And I said, "Oh, that's great." And he looked at me, and he said, and I wasn't really before today, but I am now, and that's, that's pretty cool. There was another one who said something very similar, but it was all because he got a haircut. I mean, that's amazing, the things that, you know, we just take for granted. That changed his whole outlook for starting, starting school and being excited and empowered. So, it's, it's really cool, the impact that that had. The day of service today was, it was really good, a great experience for me personally. I showed up with dozens of donuts and sausage kolaches and hopes for a bribe to maybe try to get out of the work. It didn't, it didn't happen. But in all seriousness, it was, it was amazing to me, all the teachers thanking us, thanking me so much, and I said, "It's not about me. Thank you. This is why we're here. Thank you for what you're doing." And one of the things that I thought about last night, and I want to put this out there, for next year, maybe we can consider, if we can finagle it with whatever security things and volunteer things, et cetera, but to open this up to the community and have, you know, parents and organizations, businesses, I just, everybody wants to help, I think. Billy's like, "I don't know." So, I, you know, I just, I put that out there for you to consider, Mr. Superintendent, that the teachers, if we quantified the total amount of hours that were helped today, that saved their time right before school starts, it creates that extra time with their families, creates that extra time for them to be energized, and it's such a, it was such a great positive thing. Everybody said, "This, this is the way to do a convocation," and much better than taking time out of their day to be bussed somewhere to listen to something that would hopefully be motivational. So, I know it was a little long-winded, but it was just, it's really cool to see such good things going on, and prayers go out to our community and to our teachers and all of our other staff that are, are ready and looking at the big wave that's coming on Monday. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rush. Ms. Mize?
Thank you. I echo a lot of the things that are already said, so I won't repeat them, but I will just state that at the backpack giveaway, what I thought was very interesting is, just like you said, the kids that had their backpacks, that were seeing other friends that they had there that would go up and hug them, and if it meant having to release the hug so they didn't drop their backpack, that's what they were doing, because they were just so excited to have their backpack. And watching the kids walk from there to their homes with their backpacks on their back was just very exciting, very exciting to see. Day of service today was lots of fun. I got to go to Ellis, where Mrs. Trailer is president, I mean, principal. She may be wanting to be president one day, but for now, she's principal, working her way up. But what I thought was so exciting is every time we talked to teachers, they always have a story. And it was so interesting to hear the story of my sixth-grade teacher. This is her very first year to teach here in the district as a teacher. She has subbed before. Her mother is a teacher in Fort Worth, and she is a product of Arlington ISD, went all the way through and then graduated from Martin. So, how excited to go through our district and be so pleased to want to come back and say, "I want to give to the kids what I received from this district." I just love that story. Also, met another gentleman there, sixth grade. He's been teaching for 28 years, and he's not thinking of retiring. Every year, he says he comes back, he's so excited. And what really touched me with him is something that I find very important, and that's being able to find the spirit of your school, to have spirit and be proud of what your school is. And that's what he's trying to get all of his sixth-grade students to think, so kudos to him. Now, the big thing I do want to say is with coming back to school, first of all, welcome back all your teachers. I hope you got a little break in whatever form that may be. Thank you for coming back. But parents, please remember that this is the time to join your PTAs, to join your booster clubs, to join the civic clubs there at your schools. This is the time to do that, because those are very, very important. And sign up to volunteer. And not that I have any biases towards football, but this is football season. And one positive thing I can say, though, to take that back to curriculum, which is what we want, is we push, push to graduate our students, and a lot of them do, and they are qualified for college, but they may have problems being able to pay for it. And sports is one way that they can earn an opportunity to actually pay for their schooling. So, it's very important, I think, to support our students in any of the sports or co-curriculars that they're doing. So, with that being said, welcome back, and we're going to have a great 2015, '16 school year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mize. I wholeheartedly agree. Great, great comments this evening. To the audience members here and the audience members watching from home, I want to thank you for being with us this evening, and also thank all of our staff for being here. We wish you all an exceptional start to the school year, and as, before we come to the close, Mr. Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
No, ma'am.
Good news. It is 8:11, and this meeting is adjourned.